Good evening. We're going to call this meeting to order November 10th, the in-depth session of the Muscatine City Council. Will you please do the roll call?
Councilmember Ray Walt?
Present.
Fitzgerald?
Natvig?
Present.
Sausedo?
Present.
Bynum?
Present.
Harvey?
Present.
And Spread?
Present.
Six present, one absent, your honor.
Thank you. We're going to move right along with the agenda tonight. We're going to move to number two, which is a public hearing on a proposed amendment to the city code amending Chapter Four of Title X floodplain management regulations. Now is the time for the public to comment. Any comments? Hearing none? Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Move to close.
Second?
Second.
Mike?
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion to close this public hearing is approved with all ayes. Number three on tonight's agenda is the first reading of an ordinance amending Chapter Four of Title X floodplain management regulations. Is there a motion to approve the first reading of the ordinance?
It's all moved.
For a second?
Second, your honor.
Any discussion? Hearing none, Councilman Spread, how do you vote?
Aye.
Harvey?
Aye.
Bynum?
Aye.
Sausedo?
Aye.
Natvig?
Aye.
And Ray Walt?
Aye.
Thank you. The motion to approve the first reading of the ordinance is approved with all ayes. Number four on tonight's agenda, we should be having a blue zones update by Jody Hanson.
I think Fran contacted you and indicated that Jody was ill tonight.
No, I didn't get that, but that's all right.
Okay.
We'll skip that and save it for another day.
Jody will be here next week.
All right. We'll move on to number five, an update on the HVAC system at the Public Safety Building. Public Works Director, Mr. Steinman.
I don't have so much of an update as a request or recommendation for, to move forward with repairs and additions. You should have seen, or last time we, council was here, Vic Immerosa from AJ Associates came with his recommendations. Staff would recommend that we approve option A with the addition of purchasing an extra variable speed drive, or spare motor, I'm sorry, the variable speed drives, we're not going to purchase it this time. We think that we can, if we need one, we can get those rapidly, but motors to hold up, so if we ever have a motor go down, it's anywhere from seven to 14 weeks to get a motor. So, like to have one of those on, as a spare on hand. So, that's all we have for that update, unless you have any questions.
AJ had actually recommended option C, but option A isn't a lot different.
It's not a lot different, it's, we feel that we can put in option A now at a reduced cost. If the need arises for option C, we can add that at any time later. So, our recommendation at this time is to spend less money, do option A first, see how well it works. If it works fine, we're done. If it doesn't, we can add C at any time in the future.
Right, yeah, just to clarify, AJ Associates' recommendation included A and C, and you could do A without initially, and then do C as a separate project later on if necessary. And we would propose to fund the cost out of the deferred maintenance budget that we have currently in place. I think there's probably two purchase orders that are outstanding that we would fund from road use tax that would give us 70, but, well, let's see here, would give us sufficient funds to cover the cost, the maximum cost identified by AJ Associates for around, just over $68,000, I think.
Yeah, that's the high end.
That's the high, at the high end.
There's a range there between 41 and 68, depending on pricing and everything else, so.
We have, so, tuck pointing, tuck pointing and sealing, purchase orders out, two of those are eligible for road use, so we would fund those instead out of road use, and the remainder would give us sufficient funds to fund the high cost of A.
So, that's, that's this one, right? The estimate for option A, mechanical and electrical, right?
Forty to sixty-eight, somewhere around there.
So, I have $33,000 and $49,000 for option A total.
Yes, the total would be forty-nine, this is the median estimate, it's $49,985, so there's, you have the...
So, then, the option A on the top where it says air chiller only is 33, and that's kind of like...
That's just to buy the equipment.
The early, the early...
No, that's, that's, you have to have all of these pieces to make option A work, so he...
So, that's just the material, and then...
Right. You've got the other units...
The bottom part, okay, so, because it says subtotal mechanical and then subtotal electrical.
Right, because there might be two separate bids, so you'll have two, you may have two separate contractors doing that, so that's how Vic split them out.
Okay, so, so 33 and the 16 is where he comes up with the 49.
Correct.
Which is, which is the median, and, and he provided a range of somewhere between mid-forties and mid-sixties for the cost.
Okay, I'm good, that clarifies that for me.
Other than that, Brian, just to comment that, I don't know how many people got a chance to take the tour, the behind the scenes tour, but that system is very elaborate, and we'll see how it works, but it looks like we selected the right people to do it.
We think so, yes, definitely. And if anybody else would like to have a tour, just let me know, I can arrange that for you as well. Okay, that's all I have for that one.
Thank you. Might as well stay on up there and move right into the discussion on the speed bump policy.
Okay, so, if you've, if you read the introduction and the background information, speed bumps and requests for speed bumps come up frequently for the traffic committee. We are of the opinion that it's not the best management practice to reduce speed, they cause other issues. We feel that we have better options to control speed than these speed bumps, and we would like, policy may be the wrong word, but what we'd like to do is going forward, starting as soon as practical, remove all existing speed bumps and then not put any permanent speed bumps out anymore. We have the ability to put temporary speed bumps out as necessary if we get a request, so we can put them out for up to 30 days to make people aware of the posted speed limit, but we prefer not to have any, any permanent speed bumps on the city streets, they're difficult, they're hard on pavement, they're hard on the equipment, they're, they're hard to maintain, and they really don't serve the purpose, I think, that people think that they do. So, that's our proposal from the traffic committee, if there's any questions, I can be happy to answer those.
What do you call those devices that are on Clermont?
Well, there's a speed bump on Clermont, it's in the middle of a driveway, and then, those are artificial chicanes, the little riser things, they were just put out there to slow traffic, we'd like to have those. Once Mulberry's open, their plan is to take those off, probably before it snow flies, we don't have to plow around those. They're just a glue-down or bolt-down reflector-type thing is all that they are. So, that was just a temporary measure while that, before the houses got built there, apparently before my time, but traffic was flying up there pretty fast, so I put those in there for them temporarily, but...
So, they serve the purpose of, for a speed bump essentially, don't they?
It's a trial program.
Yeah, it's a trial to slow traffic. We also have, we can increase enforcement, we have the traffic camera, we feel that we can just do it better than having to everybody bump over the speed bump, so...
We have a mobile enforcement program that we're trying out, is, you know, as well...
Is that trailer here now?
Vehicle.
Vehicle.
And...
We have the trailer also, with the speed limit trailer.
We do have a trailer, yes, but the mobile AT enforcement is, is a vehicle.
The speed bumps are problematic in the winter with the plows, huh?
Absolutely, yes. So, if there are no objections from council, we will, we'll do that next week, well, as soon as we can get to it, we have other things we're doing, but those, we'll phase those out, and then we won't put any more down. So, if this, if the traffic committee receives a request for speed bumps, we will, if we find it justifiable, we'll put the temporary out for a period of 30 days, and then we'll kind of see how it goes, but we're planning on not putting out any more permanent speed bumps on the public going streets.
I see that you kind of tried to formalize a little bit better your decision-making process.
Yeah, I wrote it a little better than I could speak it, but, but, yeah.
If you don't want a policy, it's a guideline.
Sure, I wasn't sure, you know, I'm, I'm from a different community, so we did it a little bit differently where I came from before, but however you guys want to use it, we'll make it work, so...
Well, I think it's a good idea to get rid of them.
So, what about the ones that are existing that we have that are concreted in now?
We'll take those out. They'll either be ground off or jackhammered off, and then we'll redo the pavement after we get that down, if we need to smooth it back out or whatever, we'll take those out.
How does that work for, I think there's some like over by Ripley's, and there's some over by...
If they're, the, the ones that I'm aware of are...
Is that what I'm asking?
Yeah, the ones that I'm aware of are on Sunset Drive, Weir Street, Clermont, and Oneida. So, if, and those are the public roadways. Ripley's, if they're there...
Ripley's is a private...
Yeah, they're private roadways, so they would stay there.
Right.
Yeah, that's up to them.
What about in the park, like Kent Stein?
Well, as of now, on Oneida, we had those coming out. If they're in the park, then they could, we wouldn't have a problem leaving those there, but if they're on the public roadway, they would come out.
Some of them are asphalt, actually.
They're all asphalt, I believe, yeah.
What is that place behind, I don't know the name, behind the Pepsi, there's speed bumps in those, a housing addition back there?
That one be mobile home park?
Yeah, is that city?
That'd be private.
Probably a private drive.
Private drive.
Okay. And if we put in those temporaries, you, you said those are anchored down?
Temporaries are, yes, they're, they're...
Are they redheaded in, or are we...
Pardon?
How are they anchored in? Are they concrete, air, you know?
Yeah, concrete, bolt with an anchor, screw a bolt into the anchor, and then we can remove them if we need to, just so they don't shove or anything like that, or walk away or whatever, but, yeah, they're anchored in.
I notice there's quite a variance in the bump over the, various speed bumps, you know, some of them are pretty severe, and some of them you hardly know they're there.
Right, and we like to make them uniform, no bump, so, you know, we'll take care of that.
You're going to get to rid of the two in front of the community bank there?
Those are ours.
If they're on the public roadway only.
It's a private drive.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep.
It looks like you're the star tonight.
Yeah, I'll just stay here if that's okay.
So, you might as well stay up there and review the proposals for the Hauser Street-Fulium Avenue intersection.
Sure. Let me pull up the map just so we're all on the same page, it helps me to do this. Let's see, so, Hauser-Fulium, which is right here, most of you probably know that better than I do. This is, really, the purpose of this discussion tonight is just to make council aware that we probably need to do something here at some point in the near future. There is development proposed in this area.
Can't hear?
Oh, I'm sorry, is it, yeah, let me get a little closer, how's that?
I can hear very well.
No problem. So, I'll, I'll back up, but we want to make council aware that we have a decision that's probably going to be, need to be made here at some point in the future with how we want to handle traffic at the intersection of Hauser and Fulium. There is projected to be development in this area here that would tie into Hauser, which right now is the only exit out of this development that's right here. So, cars have to wait a while, depending on the time of day, to get onto Hauser Street from Fulium, either east or west. Well, I don't live there, so I don't know, but I'm sure it's, it's inconvenient, to say the least. Traffic counts that we have for this area were about 9,500 vehicles a day going northbound through the intersection and anywhere between about 200 to around 6,000 going east and west, depending on which way you're traveling. That's from 2014 Iowa DOT traffic count, and those are daily averages.
On Hauser.
On Hauser and Fulium. Fulium was 210 going west and about 6,000, no, 6,000 westbound, Fulium at Hauser, and 210, no, 210, I'm sorry, 210 westbound and, and 6,000 eastbound.
Yeah, we know which one.
Yeah, okay.
It's the other way around.
Is it backwards on this? I apologize. I'll blame, throw my new guy card out on that as well. So, we, we've talked with staff about some potential options here in the future. One, this, probably the simplest, would just be a four-way stop sign. We've had that in the past, it's my understanding, and there was mixed reactions, there was some complaints that we had traffic backing up quite a ways, depending on the time of day, so that may be inconvenient, may not, that might be the best option, and I'm not recommending anything today, I'm just throwing these out here. Another option that we would have to be, would be to put in a signalized intersection, that can be, it's an option, it, it could be expensive. Rough estimate for just the traffic signals is about $130,000, that doesn't include any installation or anything. And I, we did have a, a engineering firm from the Quad Cities that I had worked with previously come down and give us a free sample, if you will, of some proposed work for a roundabout at that intersection, so that's another option that we've talked about as well. So, the main gist of tonight is just to, to get it out to council for some discussion. We know we have an issue here now, we know we need to make some changes, we want to make you aware of it, and just to kind of get you thinking about what may or may not work in this location. Is there any...
Your write-up makes mention of a mini roundabout.
Yeah, let me, well, let me pull it up here quick.
This is for 200 cars, basically.
No, a lot more than that.
Here's the numbers.
200 is coming eastbound on Fulium, the rest of them are a lot higher.
So, mini roundabout is, is just kind of a, I don't know why they call it mini, other than it's not a complete blown-out intersection, it's a little bit smaller diameter than, than it would be at, like, Cedar Street, which is one of our frame of references here. In a, in a larger roundabout, I suppose they would come back to the corners, and I, I don't know if I can illustrate on here or not, but, not really. With the mini roundabout, the larger vehicles, the school buses, the semis, they would just drive straight through the intersection. That red part in there would just be like painted concrete, dyed concrete, so they could go straight through an emergency vehicle, whatever, and have like a three-inch rollover curb, so you would know that you're on it, but you wouldn't have to go around it. Regular vehicles would go around it, make the turn, and go whichever direction that they wanted to go. So, it's smaller in footprint than a traditional roundabout with no center access, and that's really about the only difference. The cost is, for roughly, for this, something like this would be about $300,000, similar to what we could expect to cost for a signalized intersection. The, the only thing about this option that, that I personally like is that the intersection there is already in need of repair, so if we're going to go in there and repair the intersection anyway, we'd have an opportunity to put this in at minimal additional cost.
But what would be that minimal additional cost?
Well, you, you're going to do different concrete pouring with the circles, you're going to have dyed stamped con, or dyed concrete anyway, it may not, you have to be stamped, there might be a little bit of right-of-way acquisition, and you're pouring, you're doing medians in the center where there are currently no medians existing, so there'd be a little bit added expense for that.
And you said that you, you had had them come down because you knew them?
Yeah, they, I've had quite a few calls since I've moved here, that vendors that I worked with before that wanted to come down and see how I'm doing, and if they can offer any help, so, that, one of those calls, I said, sure.
But had they, had they provided a service like this before, for you over there?
They had not built a roundabout, but they had designed them in the past in other cities. So, this, this was just a schematic, I met them at the intersection, I showed it to them, they took some measurements, I think they just used GIS and put this on paper. If we went any farther, we'd obviously have to have a survey and, you know, more details...
No, no, that's fine, I just didn't know if there was maybe a couple over in Davenport or somewhere that said, oh, this is what we put in.
Not in Davenport, no.
There are, there are some in the, in Iowa, there's some more, more of a traditional style, smaller roundabouts, there's two that they just put in Ames, almost within a block of each other.
Yeah, this...
Old Holiday Inn.
And this firm in Shivehattery, they've put in two in Corvale, I believe, is where they kind of had the concept, and, you know, just, like I said, it's just an option at this point, so...
Yeah, no, I just wanted to ask.
If you know where they are, we could send, send that out, and if...
I, I do have a, well, I can send you the link, they have a, a video on their website, and that shows them driving around, so I'll get that to you guys.
Is that Matt from Shivehattery?
Sorry.
Matt Knipper from Shivehattery, or...
That's not who I talked to on this, no. So, yeah, if there's any other questions, otherwise, that's really, I just wanted to get it up there and have a little conversation going. At some point, either, either staff will make a recommendation, or if council chooses to direct us to hire a consultant or whatever, we have to, we'll have to make a move on this next, well, depends on when it develops, but...
The traffic signals, with installation, would be 200 grand at least, wouldn't it?
Yes, probably more than that.
Two and a quarter, yeah, that's ridiculous, but...
Did you discuss adding the right turn lane on Fulium as well?
We haven't done that, no, not at this point.
Right, and I think there, I think we talked that there was room at one point in time to add a right turn lane kind of off of Fulium.
So, my question is, with your, with your assessments that you guys had done from the DOT numbers that you had from 2014, your expectations that it's going to increase, did we have any numbers similar from maybe Mulberry and Hauser, or Lucas and Hauser?
Yes.
Determined to say, or is this the main area that we're really seeing?
No, it's...
Or are we going to say, hey, we need roundabouts on every...
Well, Hauser's a busy street, let me, I've got those numbers, let me pull them up here quick.
While Brian's doing that, if you recall, we did the temporary four-way stop when Cedar Street was under construction as a, as a temporary measure during construction, and, I don't know, we got various amount of feedback, I think the feedback that I had was about 50% loved it and 50% hated it at the time. And we've known we need to do something at Fulium for, for a number of years, and it's, it's been in the works, starting to take a look at it now and plan for it.
Now, we could do it for about 200 bucks.
Four-way stop?
You're too far south.
Well, and I think, I think...
Yeah, jumped on me.
That's the simple fix, you know?
We're going to give everybody a chance to come up and share as soon as Mr. Steinman's done, that way we can get some idea of what, what you're feeling, those of you that, that live in that area.
So, it's probably difficult to see here, and I apologize for that, yeah, Jim's pointing to Hauser-Fulium, but if you go north of there, that's Cedar, there's about 8,500 cars a day that go through that, and 6,000, 8,500 north-south, about 6,000 east-west. Mulberry didn't quite get measured the same way, but there's about 6,700 cars east-west on Mulberry, because it intersects, because Hauser doesn't go through Mulberry, you don't have that through-traffic count, but it's, you can figure it's around 8,000 to 9,000 cars a day.
And we have Lucas, numbers there?
Pardon?
Lucas?
Yes. Lucas is about 40, about 5,000, 5,900 north of Lucas and about 4,200 south. And I can get this map to you guys if you'd like that as well, just so you can look at that, but that, those are 2014 Iowa DOT traffic counts, and they do that every two years.
A map with the traffic counts.
Correct.
And, yeah, I'd like to see that, because, I mean, basically, on, on Lucas and Hauser, we have right now, what, a five, a four-way stop, correct? And then over on Cedar, we basically have a stoplight, and...
Mulberry's a sign.
Okay, and Mulberry's a sign. Yeah, if you can get us that, and that'll help us kind of make that, because the, the simple answer to not have added cost is a four-way, a three-way stop, a four-way stop.
Yeah, right, right, and, and the reason I brought up the roundabout was because, like I said, that intersection at some point has to be redone, just because of the concrete's failing, so we'll have to fold up the patch. So, if we're already in there taking, tearing that out for minimal extra expense, we could have a roundabout that, you know, with no stoppage of traffic, so, but we're not making a recommendation tonight, just wanted to bring it to your attention.
Thank you.
I don't live in that area, but at times I do use those intersections, to me, it's obvious that the difficulties come at school time, when traffic is going and coming from the school, and it's, it's sort of unfortunate that our concern of these intersections is driven by a relative short-term occurrence, you know, twice a day, but that's the way it is.
Difficult at 5 o'clock, too. Been through it.
Oh, yeah.
So, if there are any other questions, that's all I have.
Why don't we go ahead and let people come up that, that live in that area and look at this issue every day? Does anybody have something that they'd like to come up and share with council? Please come to the podium and say your name and address.
I'm Big Mac, right? All right. Can I get out? I have to walk in, I apologize.
Not a problem.
Okay, let's help her out. My name is Karen Fisher, I live on Duncan, on Duncan Drive. My husband and I moved here two and a half years ago into that house. So, when this issue came up, I was very, very excited to come up here and talk to you people. I, since we, when we first moved there, that, this intersection you're talking about, Hauser and Fulium, there was a stop sign there for a short period of time. I don't know what the history was before that, I'm just going from what I know now. And there was a stop sign there for, and it worked. It, and I admit, I was one of the people at first that would say, oh, my God, if it's stop, start, stop, start, you know, it got to be irritating, but after a while, you get used to it, and it was very smooth and very, very practical. And then I noticed that they, they had the stops, the stop signs there at the intersection for several months, maybe, I want to say four or five months, I could be a little wrong on that time period, but then, all of a sudden, they were taken away. I don't know what the reason was, I, I have no idea, but all of a sudden, the stop signs were gone at that intersection. And then, what was happening that I noticed, when I'd pull up to, to get out onto, onto Hauser, I'd stop, because automatically you stop because you were conditioned to the stop sign being there. Well, so were most of the people. I was noticing that on all four sides of the street, everybody was slowing down almost two, if not all, coming to a stop, and then they would proceed with caution, because they were used to the stop signs being there, they were just, they were there long enough to get the people conditioned to it being there, and then all of a sudden, they were gone, but people were still stopping a little bit, which was good. At times, it caused a little confusion, because some people don't know stop-start, they don't know the rules of the road, and who has the right-of-way first to right or left of it, but they, you know, that's minor. The main thing is now, there's nothing, there's no control there at all, and people fly through, and I mean they fly, down of, down Hauser. At 3:00 in the afternoon, I go to pick up my granddaughter, she lives, she's, she lives, she goes to school at Saint Mary Mathews, which is only around the corner, a block over. I leave the house at quarter of, and I go to the, I go to the corner of Duncan and Ha, and Hauser to make my left-hand turn to go up to the school. It takes me sometimes eight or nine minutes to safely make my left-hand turn into the intersection, just to continue my, my trip, because traffic is moving, and I mean just moving, down, down Hauser, and the same way across the way, on, coming this way, on Fulium, people have to stop and wait because traffic is just moving too fast. And I, well, my husband and I many a times in the last three years have said to ourselves, you know, we'd like to take up a petition in our own, just our own subdivision to get a stop sign there, because I think it is a practical, and as the gentleman earlier pointed out, obviously, it's the least, a lesser of the options that you have expense-wise, putting up a stop sign, doesn't cost 300, 100... you have expense-wise, putting up a stop sign. Doesn't cost $300, $130,000. A roundabout, I, the only time I've ever experienced a roundabout is when I made a trip to Boston, and that was the very first time I ever experienced a roundabout, till I moved here. The roundabout by, what is that, Cedar, I think that works out great for that particular intersection. I think roundabouts are good in where, you know, in the proper locations, because I see that working, and I think it's wonderful. I do not think it is feasible and workable at this intersection, especially now. And not only that, not only that, but because now I have word that, as the gentleman pointed out, there's going to be some possible construction behind our subdivision. Now, if they put, if they're, they're closing what they proposed to do, which I just learned about today, because only a few of our residents were informed of this, not all, which is, again, very complicated and very annoying to me and all of our people on Duncan Lane, only maybe, maybe four houses on Duncan Drive were alerted to this fact, that they're going to put another subdivision, or proposing to put another subdivision behind there where the, where that home is, and causing more traffic to come down Foleum, which is, again, going to be a very, very serious situation. My recommendation, one, is to at least put a stop sign there at that intersection. Two, I don't understand, I know it's another issue, but I am really appalled that Muscatine area did not inform the people in that, in our area, that we're going to put a subdivision in, except for two or three houses on our block. So then they could get off with the excuse that they notified the people. That is not right. They did not notify the people. They notified a few houses or a few people. That's not right. When you're going to put a subdivision in, that's a big, that's a big proposal. It's a big cost. It's going to affect our schools. It's going to affect traffic on that road. It's going to affect where they want to put the subdivision. That's a drainage pond area for our whole subdivision that's already been there for several years. I don't understand that at all. I don't know how anyone can build, build a retaining area for one subdivision and then go ahead a few years later and want to build on that same, you know, on that same retention pond.
Well, that's a different, that's a different topic there. So let's focus on what we're at here.
Yeah, okay, so that's, I think that's going to cover a lot.
We take the stop sign and we'll definitely take that into.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Does anybody else? Please say your name and address.
My name is Dan Gebel. I'm at 1807 Duncan Drive. I've been at that address for about a year and a half now. Bought the house with the wife, moved in the subdivision. You know, it's a nice place. Don't get me wrong. I love the place, love the people that are around me, love the community. We work eight to five, both of us, seven to five, have a kid. A lot of in and out. Both have cars, right? Both have vehicles. We both go through that intersection daily. I do it about more than the wife. So, I go home for lunch, because I'm close enough, I can go home for lunch. So, to answer your question, it isn't quite just the 8:00 in the morning. It isn't just the 3:00. When I hit lunchtime, it's busy. I go through there, it's busy. And granted, yeah, I'm going straight, which is the worst of all scenarios in that scenario, right? I have to cross two lanes to get through. I came from Wisconsin, right? We were very progressive in putting in roundabouts in our areas. Our city, well, one of the cities I lived in was Eau Claire, Wisconsin. They were a little bit too progressive in some areas of putting roundabouts. Their concept of the mini was not too undifferent from this. They proceeded at one point to pull out one of the roundabouts because of the fact that it caused too much of an issue with the snowplows. It caused too much of an issue with the large semis and large traffic vehicles, longer vehicles, not even semis themselves, but just the longer trucks, which we do have trafficking up and down. I don't see how the maintenance of that, because once you put that in, now you've got to maintain all that extra concrete you've just put in. You've got to maintain the paint in the center. You've got to maintain the presence of that roundabout. I get it. It's, it's a good alternative for, if we're removing that concrete, yes. It may be a good alternative, but in a cost scenario, you're still going to end up paying the price in the long run. Plus, you've got to start annexing road that doesn't exist around it, right?
So is your recommendation the thing that you would prefer would be the stop sign?
I would prefer a stop sign. I mean, don't get me wrong, I'd love a light there, right? As a resident, I'd love to have permanent access on there, but I know I can't have permanent access all the time, right? Now, if you put lights there, my recommendation would be put a sensor on them, right? So if we come up to the light, then we can impede the traffic flow, okay?
Okay.
Not that we impede at all times, because like, when I notice, it's, they were talking school time. Well, at school time, I can watch, and if I'm turning left coming out of there, I'll watch vehicles on a string of vehicles at 7:00 in the morning, 10 vehicles long, turning left on Foleum, right, from the northbound lane, turning left onto Foleum, going eastbound. And I'm watching just a stream of cars going north on Foleum, and nobody's going anywhere, right? Because there, you got all this going forward, and they'll back up sometimes all the way to the Dollar General, just waiting for vehicles to turn.
Sure.
And then you've got the vehicles coming out of the small apartment complex that's also on the other side of the road, just up, like, not even up, two houses. They're trying to get onto that same road, and it's just, it gets to be a nightmare sometimes. But from a cheap standpoint, yes, a set of stop signs would be wonderful, right? But if, if we found that we needed a little bit more control at that intersection, right, than just a stop sign, I would suggest putting sensors on the lights. I mean, it's a little bit of extra cost, but it doesn't impede the flow on Hauser going north and south.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
Anyone else?
My name's Brock Duncan. I live at 1808 Duncan Drive. First of all, I guess with the roundabout, as the gentleman said, with the speed bumps and the snowplows, putting a raised surface in the middle of the intersection doesn't seem like it'd be the right way to go. You'd be constantly fixing the cement or the, wouldn't get cleared properly, I would think. So I'm going to say, you know, I would be in favor of a stop sign. I know I wouldn't want a stoplight in my front yard. You know, the LED style now, they're pretty bright. So, I mean, you know, a couple hundred bucks, a couple guys knocking out in a day, done deal. Never, no, never talked about again. So, that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brock.
Anyone else?
My name is Milton Fisher. I live at 1812 Duncan. I've been kind of keeping track of it, because I was going to go to our representative about at least getting a no-outlet sign on Duncan. But the problem is, that whole area by us is no outlet. The only way we can get out of the subdivision is at that corner of Foleum. And now you're talking about putting in a huge proposal for a subdivision behind us with one exit down that same intersection. And on, during the spring and fall especially, when Discovery Park has their little functions going and such, on an average day, we find five to seven cars, come down the street, come onto Duncan, make the circle, and then a couple of times, I've actually seen them lay rubber getting out of there, and they realize it doesn't go through. If we can't have a stop sign, at least a no-outlet sign would stop about half of the traffic that goes down there, because nobody belongs down there but us.
Sure.
I mean, the eight or nine houses that we're at, there's no reason for other cars to be coming down that street. And.
Thank you.
That's my big concern about this whole thing. Why can't we, if we can't have a stop sign, at least let us have a no-outlet sign. If it's a matter of money with the budget, I'm sure I could go around the neighborhood, get enough collections to pay for a sign in about 10 minutes.
Thank you for your comments, and thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to share?
I just have a quick question.
Please come to the podium and say your name and address. We have to do that for the tape recording.
Okay.
That's why. You can't talk from the audience.
Gotcha. I'm Amanda Duncan. I live on 1808 Duncan Drive.
Okay.
We just, we've lived there for eight and a half years, and we just found out about everything yesterday. And so we have a lot of questions, and you only want to talk about the intersection tonight. So when would you like to answer our questions?
About the subdivision?
About the subdivision.
You would have to probably talk to that actual group of gentlemen over there. They're going to know. We really don't have a.
Okay.
A say until we actually get that approval, which is still not in our hands yet.
Okay.
Please, please just keep an eye on the agendas. Do you know how to sign up so that you get an email when the agendas come out?
No.
Okay.
Yeah, go ahead.
Go right ahead.
Go ahead. Andrew.
Andrew Fangman, City Planner. So to clarify what's going on there, what's going on there is not technically a subdivision. It's a development plan.
Can I speak up to the owner, sir?
I'm sorry, ma'am. So it's kind of given overview of this area. It's zoned S3, which is a special development district. And how the S3 district works is it allows for a broad range of potential uses, but when a specific, when an applicant comes up with a specific plan, they submit it to just the Planning and Zoning Commission for approval. And so that's what's been happening lately. And in terms of notification, both city code and state law mandates that we mail out the notifications adhering to everyone within 200 foot. That's the same standard we use for all these. And so the Planning and Zoning Commission did act on this development plan on Tuesday. It's the old, five acres around the old Op Tame building. And what's been proposed with that is turning that building into a six-plex, and then the potential future down the road, a four-plex, and then six more duplexes. And so they approved that on Tuesday. Because it's a development plan, that doesn't go, come on further to council, because the zoning is already in place.
Thank you.
Any other questions on that?
Anyone else?
I have a question as to why weren't the people notified until?
Ma'am, if you, if you want to talk, you do need to come to the podium. But his answer was, anybody within a 200-foot radius was notified. That, that would be the answer.
Hi, my name's Melissa Dillon. I live at 1716 Duncan Drive. So, I just want to know when, I was unable to make Tuesday's meeting, and I plan to call the number to talk and voice my opinion or concern with the duplexes being built directly behind my home. So, my question to you is, when, when can I address that with someone? Do I need to call privately? Is there going to be another meeting? I have a very low, my property is the lowest level there, and there's problems with drainage already.
It sounds to me like what Mr. Fangman was sharing was that it is zoned according to be able to do that, and so it doesn't even need to come to council. Was that what you were saying, Andrew? So, it's, we don't have any, anything that we can do.
Okay, so is there anyone that we could discuss anything with, just concerns or just?
I would, I would encourage you just to call City Hall, and you can ask for Andrew Fangman, and he can kind of run through the plan. We really shouldn't, under this agenda item, any, any further. But I would encourage you to call.
Just call him.
Call Andrew, and we can run through the development plan with you and give you an idea of what's going on.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Since I came here to voice my opinion, Jean Mosh, 1816 Duncan Drive. Listen to other people and what they want to do as far as the light situation is. I'm hearing what the development is and the other ways to go with that. Have high concerns on that and tell the developer that. But I've heard other options, and anything that you can do, it would be helpful. I think there's a safety issue there, severe. We have children. We're probably going to have more with the new development. That's a high priority. But it's a, for us, as we're older, it's trying to maneuver around fast traffic and make split decisions, which is what happens. Now, we can say, I'm not going out there, but if my doctor wants an appointment at this time, and my husband and my other business things that I don't have control over, it is a problem. As I was listening to the options that we had, I came in here thinking, I want a stoplight, and I want one with a flashing turn. I think that's the safest and the best investment for our whole community. I know the investment might be more than the four-way stop. I also understand when we had a four-way stop, at certain times, the traffic backed up to Cedar, you know, and that, and that presents problems with the development, the business development there. We've got banks there. We've got other services there. The post office is there. So, long-term, I'm thinking that the, that a good stop sign with a signal. And I think that, and I'm not sure of this, I'm thinking that there are times when I go through lights and they change, like on the weekends and what have you. Is that an option, or is that just something that I thought up, but I thought, oh, this is different, you know? And so perhaps that, maybe, perhaps that is part of, part of it. And that's the one I favor. The roundabout there, I think presented, even a small roundabout presents problems. I think Dave, is it, yeah, said that, you know, with snow and what have you. So I think I, in my opinion, my recommendation would be not to do that. My recommendation is to go with the light. Long-term, it's the best solution. Go with that. It's the safest for all of us, but particularly the children that are going to be going to school and back and forth.
Thank you, Mrs. Mosh. We do thank all of you for coming and sharing your input with us tonight. Moving on to, so if any of you have, just to bring that up one more time, any concerns or questions about the development, please call City Hall and ask for Andrew Fangman, and he will be able to share with you where they're at.
Please.
You got it? Okay, thank you. We're going to move on to number eight, which is a discussion on the city code updates.
Yeah, yes, Your Honor. Just real briefly tonight, we just wanted to bring this forward. Since the city code was adopted July 1, 2015, Fran's been keeping track of minor changes, ministerial or script errors, that we want to bring forward for adoption. This is just an FYI tonight, that these will be coming forward. And there's a summary that Fran has prepared and included in the agenda packet. For the most part, these are ministerial or minor items. Where, for example, 7913 compliance city codes says Chapter 7917, and it should say 13 instead of 17. For the most part, these are all ministerial items that we're going to bring forward in one, one packet for, for adoption. The, the one note is the Convention and Visitors Bureau, which was not included in the city code, will need to come forward and, for consideration as part of the appointment processes as well. The next step, and we have several ordinances that have been adopted since July 1 of 2015, and as such, the city's typical process for adding those into the code book is on an annual basis to adopt those by resolution, to add them to the, to the, to the city code. I don't know, I don't believe that it's actually required to do by resolution. I'm having a discussion with the city attorney. But the next step will be to include those ordinances adopted since July 1, 2015, into the actual code book and place them online in our searchable PDF city code. So you'll see these items coming forward in the near future.
Is there a reason not to have more than annual updates to the city code?
Not to have more than?
Once that, a new ordinance or?
Well, it's a question.
Just do it.
It's a question I've asked the city attorney, because what we're looking at is whether you just adopt the ordinance and immediately add it.
Correct.
To the PDF version, rather than having to go through the, the resolution process. At a minimum, these items have to be added and the city code adopted every five years, at a minimum. But I think it would be much easier just to simply add them in immediately following adoption and have the code book adopted. If not, in the alternative, we're looking at some different options, such as including the adopted ordinances underneath the code book online, and some different things to make it clear. Because obviously, once an ordinance is adopted, it is law at that point in time. Just because it's not in the, in the code book itself, does not mean it's not law. Immediately, you know, upon adoption and signature, in the appropriate timeframes, it is, it is law.
That's why I'd be in favor of adding it to the code as soon as it's adopted.
I've asked the question. I'll let you know the answer.
The other thing we did, Greg, too, is like, in the sections where there's fees and stuff that are maybe changed more frequently.
Yes. We did that.
They're referred to, and then we can change.
By resolution rather than ordinance, yes, absolutely. Simple process. So these items will be coming forward, and I just wanted to give you. So these items will be coming forward, and I just wanted to give you an opportunity to take a look at those that Fran has been keeping. I believe the fire chief has some items as well, we'll have to deal with on a separate, at a separate time, we're able to get those forward for tonight.
This is just sort of a curiosity question, if one section refers to another section incorrectly, does that present an enforcement issue?
For the most part, just to, you know, a scribner's error, for example, would not, that's why we're just doing the cleanup, to make sure that it's not an issue.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Spred, do you have anything to share tonight?
Nothing this evening, Your Honor.
Councilman Harvey?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Councilman Saseo?
Um, yeah, I had two things. One, that I had, I had some conversations with some businesses down at the downtown, asking how the, how their feelings were about going from one-way to two-way, and I had a lot of good responses. I was really happy with that. There was just one concern about some of the loading zones and some signs over by the Hills Paint Store and, uh, for, Feather and something, I don't know, apologize for, yeah. Yeah, and there was some questions about some loading zone signage, and I think that's something that I'd like to follow up with, um, later. And the second one that I called you on, trying to see if maybe Jim could give us an update on Mulberry, brief, maybe two minutes, if you have time, and that'll be all I'll have.
Of course he has time.
I've got some stuff for Jim, too, so.
Right, this thing's too small, too short. Mayor, Council, Mulberry. Uh, last time we talked, I think I said before Thanksgiving, I will still tell you before Thanksgiving, they've poured a lot of concrete out there, they still have a ways to go, weather still looks good, extended forecast, et cetera, et cetera. It still looks like that's the case, they, they will have it. The second thing I'd like to bring up, even though no one asked about it, but we did get some complaints, uh, serious complaints, about how dusty it is out there, and I'm disappointed, the city's disappointed that the contractor didn't take care of it today, they promised us they would take care of it today. Uh, it's a 4:15 today, they promised us that at seven o'clock in the morning, they would be taking care of it, and I said, that's good, because we're not paying you any more money till that's taken care of. So we have let them know that that's a serious thing, and we would like to have that taken care of. Any other questions?
Not my turn, but if you'll wait there for a second.
I've got one, Jim, you had some individual driveways out there where the elevation was not a major problem, but was going to need some, is that, are those being resolved also, the, the new street to the? As far as I know, yes. The, uh, what Scott is referring to is that all new construction has to comply with ADA, and you cannot have a sidewalk that has any more than a 2% cross slope. So if you have a sidewalk through your driveway, the driveway has to come down to it, break, go 2%, and then break back down again. Um, yes, it's a huge, it's a, it's a challenge to do that in, in a lot of places. Uh, so people that had a driveway that was nice and smooth and went straight, now have got two bumps in it. And, uh, but there have been a couple of residents out there that have, that I have talked to directly, um, that expressed some concerns about their driveway either being too steep or too rough, but, uh, as far as I know, those have all been resolved. Good. That's all I have.
Mr. Jim, two things, please. The Mississippi Drive Engineers promised they'd have the, their design done by, before the end of November. Is that correct?
No, I don't believe so. To do, to do what? Maybe I interrupted you.
To get ready for the bid package.
The plan that they said was to be for a January letting.
And that you'll check, well, check, will you please?
Yes.
I thought that was supposed to be for, for, uh, November, for, for January letting.
Yes.
It has to be in November.
Yes.
So if you'll check, please.
I, absolutely, I will.
And see where they are, as well as what, what was supposed to be, okay, thank you. Um, we spoke several months ago about possibly, not, not possibly, about eliminating some of the bump outs on Second Street to get some more parking spaces.
Was definitely longer ago than that.
Okay.
Um, it, we looked at that, we, we put that plan together, that's something that is, um, in public works, but it has not managed to make its way to the top of the priorities list yet. Uh, there's some parking spots that are in that one parking lot, too, at Pine, and that were in that discussion, too. So, uh,
What is that?
We can revisit, we can revisit that. I, I, I'm not sure what, I'm not sure what the status of that is, I guess is what I should tell you.
Would you let us know next week, please?
Absolutely.
All right. It's all, thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Jim.
Was that all you had, Councilman Saseo?
That's all I have, yes.
Councilman Natbig?
I was going to have Jim give us an update, but Santos beat me to it. But I want to, do want to thank the citizens for coming tonight and giving us their input. Other than that, nothing. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Raywalt, did you have anything else?
No, thank you.
Councilman Bynum?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Thank you. Mr. Mottaker?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
All right.
Want to do a favor, Governor?
Sure.
Milton Fisher, 1812 Duncan. This has nothing to do with Duncan, but I want to address your ordinance a little bit. There's a way this village is wasting money with these, with an ordinance, and with their garbage pickup. Uh, I watched those guys dump five, six, seven cans of garbage in the truck and take off. Terrific, the city's picking it up, they're doing a good job, but they passed out those big garbage cans a while back, a month or so. Why not stickers on all the other garbage cans? If you want to put out 10 cans of garbage, why don't you pay more money than the guy that's putting out one can, or charging, the city's paying for one can. The other thing is, you got trucks going back and forth with leaves and brushing and all that, and people buy the bags to put, okay, city has to pay for those bags. I realize you get money back from the merchants when they sell them, but they make little stickers that you could put on your own paper bag for a heck of a lot more, less money than the city be paying for those bags. And if there's a sticker on the bag, or whether it's a purple bag, what's the difference? The guy's going to pick it up anyway. The other thing is, I'm new to this, this town, we've only been here two and a half years. Have you taken a ride down some of the streets in the evening or at night, when all the people are home? You got trucks for construction companies, it's construction trailers, RVs, you got cars up on the lawn. Uh, I had to move here, we've got family here, but this would not be my, my first choice as a town, because it looks terrible at night. If you can afford, run a business, you can afford to park your business vehicles in a business lot somewhere, we got all kinds of empty lots in this town. Also, the street parking overnight, a lot of people don't have garages, fine, that's, that's habits, but there's also a, a large number of people that park on the street because the city lets them. Issue street parking permits, little sticker, bright color, put it in the driver's side window, when the police drive around at night on their patrol route, if there's cars on the street and they don't see a sticker, set a fine. City gets the money, and you're not hurting anybody except the person that wants to, to take a shortcut. And, uh, one, to make it a heck of a lot easier for the guys that have to plow, they got enough cars to go around, why, uh, why not make, make them get the ones that don't need to be on the street, off the street? And the idea of boats and trailers and parked on parkways, I think is ridiculous, because, again, if, if you can afford that equipment, park it somewhere.
Thank you, Mr. Fisher.
Thank you.
I'm sure Public Works will listen to your comments, make note.
I like some of the ideas.
Again, thank you to everyone for coming tonight. I just had a few things. November 19th is the next Coffee with the Mayor at Happy Joe's at 9:00 AM. Secondly, I would just like to share that I need to fly to Denver in the morning for a meeting, and Councilman Bynum is mayor pro tem in my absence. I'll be back late Sunday night, early Monday morning, so if anybody needs anything, please contact Councilman Bynum. His contact information is on the website. And lastly, I would like to thank everyone for the prayers for my dad this past weekend, and thank you to Dr. Ned Carney and Dr. Hoss Detler and all the hospital staff, they're doing a great job taking care of him. Thank you for your prayers. Please have a good evening and a good rest of your week. Motion to adjourn.
So.
I always forget that one. Have a good evening.
Oh, you're all caught.